He gets out of his truck. Pulls him out. And then picks him up.
Yeah.
And then drops.
Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Mayor Meeks.
Here.
Commissioner Meeks, again.
Well, he was a mayor.
Was that me or you, Joe? I'm not sure.
Commissioner Meeks.
I'm here, too.
Commissioner Eichmeyer.
Here.
Commissioner Dogger. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
And Mayor Judge.
I hope I'm here. All right. And I never take that as an insult, Tom.
I know, neither do I.
Yes. That's good. All right, so I need approval of minutes, a meeting held December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Eichmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger's absent.
All right. Visitors, Mr. Dallas, MFT report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council. We've prepared a res- an amended resolution for our MFT funding. Actually reduced the amount that will be needed in this resolution because there were some. Remember, there were some streets that we had thought that we would do some overlay on and we felt that the prices weren't acceptable, so we reduced those. And in doing so, we've we did incur some expenses that are MFT eligible in terms of the salt, salt.
Right.
Dome and so on and so forth. And I think that's really turned out to be a nice deal. I hope we don't have to use it, but it's nice.
Me, too.
So, we didn't have the salt storage facility and the salt in our resolution, in our original resolution. In order for it to be able to be eligible, we need to amend the one. So we've taken away the paving, added the salt and salt dome. And it actually reduces it somewhere around forty thousand.
Good.
Great deal.
So anyway, that's all. So we do have an amended resolution that the new resolution is in the amount of hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
And it's resolution number six eighty-four, and I'd like to basically says that be resolved by the council of City of Mount Carmel, Illinois, that there is hereby appropriated the sum of a hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents of motor fuel tax for the purposes of maintaining streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code from one one twenty-one to twelve thirty-one twenty-one. And that only those operations as listed and described on the approved estimate of maintenance costs, including the supplement or revised estimates approved interconnection with this resolution, are eligible for maintenance with motor fuel tax funds during the period as specified. That's it.
All right.
So I'd like to say, it says that only those that are on the list, approved list, that are by council, so that's the purpose of this, so.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second? Oh, is it in consent? Okay, sorry.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dallas. All right, on to reports. Hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and we'll have a wonderful New Year. I'll be giving the state of the city address in January and we'll be broadcasting it on our website and also media outlets. The last two Mondays, I've been down in Mayfield, Kentucky, um, doing, you know, what we can to help out and everything. Things are still very bleak down there, but they are improving. Their city hall, police station were directly hit, their courthouse, many other buildings. And a lot of homes were completely destroyed. So, um, they have a long, long way before they have anything close to being normal again. So our thoughts and prayers are still with everyone in Edwardsville and Kentucky, Tennessee areas that were affected by tornadoes. One thing hopefully everybody's learned is please be aware of the weather, especially during warm weather in December like we're currently having. Cold fronts can change the weather conditions very fast. And I'm glad to say that all weather sirens are working here in Mount Carmel. They were working in Edwardsville and they were working in Mayfield. Things happen very quickly, so please be aware and get a weather radio or watch the TV. I can't overstress that, so. I know they're calling for potential storms this coming Saturday. And then also they're calling for snow in the near future, too. So anyway, please just be aware of the weather and everybody stay safe. Also, yesterday I attended a DCEO training session on accelerated Illinois broadband infrastructure planning program. It was very educational. Hopefully, we can qualify to enroll on this, uh, to this and get funding for expanded broadband here in Mount Carmel. They were really looking, um, they're looking for twelve communities to do this in the next year. They'll pick six in February and then another six in May, and it's a fourteen-week program. This is a community-based program if selected, so we will need input from various people in Mount Carmel if we are, you know, enrolled in this and approved for this program to help expand broadband here in Mount Carmel. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we're successful and trying to bring some funds here locally to expand broadband internet services in Mount Carmel. I attended a Village of West Salem meeting a couple, what, Monday, December twentieth? And, uh, was speaking with one of the trustees, Jeff Bradham, in West Salem. He's over there building and maintenance of, um, all assets of West Salem. They currently have a need for a steel pole to mount their storm sirens. Right now, their storm siren is mounted on top of their city hall slash fire department. And they're wanting to get it off of the building and more centrally located. And they're looking for a pole anywhere from twenty to thirty foot in length. We currently have about ten to fifteen of these self-described poles for, uh, that could be used for this. And I'd like to get council's approval to make a donation to the ci- uh, Village of West Salem for one of these poles to help them out. They're about like every other little village in the area. They don't have a lot of money to spend. And this, these are poles that Illinois Department of Transportation put up. We had the market street signal lights on. And I can't think of a better way to help another community out and help protect them by mounting their storm sirens up higher to help their residents, so. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, well, I guess roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Eichmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman. Commissioner Dogger's absent.
All right. I appreciate it very much. I think they will be, um, very appreciative. On another term, the city of West Salem purchased one of our old squad cars and that helped them out a bunch also. And so, uh, they were very appreciative of Chief McWilliams working with them on that also, but anyways, I appreciate it. New laws taking effect in twenty twenty-one. There are a hundred and twenty-two new laws taking effect in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And they're varying. Some of them will affect residents of Mount Carmel, some will not. It's interesting, the gamut of new laws. They go from anywhere from the current licensing on a gambling machine is set by a state statute, which is twenty-five dollars, effective immediately. It goes to two hundred and fifty dollars per gambling machine per, um, location. What did we come up with? How many? Uh, gambling machines are in the corporate city limits of Mount Carmel?
Seventeen thousand plus dollars on, we're out for the twenty-five dollars, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to, uh, turn around and send out an update since that's gonna be a state statute. We need to send out and have everybody up to current statute.
So if they're paid up, are those yearly payouts or?
Yes, effective immediately.
So like if, I mean, are all ours on the twelve thirty-one, like the liquor license?
Then all of your video gaming, that's what it's talking about.
Right.
Yeah, they're gonna have to.
So they've already paid the twenty-five.
Yep, and we have to go back and rebuild, uh, because this was signed into legislation on the twenty, twentieth or twenty-first, I can't remember. The governor signed it effective immediately.
Where do those fees go? Do those go to the state or do those go to us?
Us. Go to the general fund.
That's my question, too.
Yeah, so, anyway.
Will that also increase our revenue on the machines or just strictly for the license?
Just strictly for the licensing. So if a establishment has machines that they are not in use currently, they still have to pay that fee per the state statute.
So there's a possibility we may lose some machines?
I doubt we do.
But technically, yeah. I mean.
Yeah, you could.
If they don't want to pay the increase.
Yeah.
You figure someone's got five machines, that's.
Exactly.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, yes, it is.
For the people that are doing the limited.
Yeah, the smaller ones. I mean, like the golf course, I don't know what the revenue is, but.
They've only got two, though.
Yeah, I mean, it goes from fifty dollars to five hundred for the golf course, so. But somebody that's got six gaming, um, machines, it's quite the increase. So, anyway. We're just the messenger.
Sure.
State of Illinois. That's one of the new laws. Another new law that, um, is interesting, it used to be that, uh, you know, we just recently, uh, put out to hire a firefighter. And was it thirty-five? You had to be under the age of thirty-five. And we've, we've run across that issue where we had good qualified firefighters that were thirty-five and eight days or thirty-six years old. And we couldn't hire them. Well, now the state of Illinois has come back and said that there is not an age requirement to be a fire, full-time firefighter as long as they have had a time period or association with that firehouse. So that is effective on January first, twenty twenty-two. So, um, it's a lot of information and a lot of new laws, um, that, um, are coming our way, so.
You know, one of the new laws I think is gonna be beneficial is they're gonna reduce the license plate for a trailer.
Yes.
It went from eighteen dollars to a hundred and eighteen dollars. And they passed a law where it's gonna drop down to thirty-six.
Yep.
So these guys that own construction trailers, maybe two or three of them, four of them, that they take to work every day. I mean, that was killing them, so now they've reduced that down. Uh, I know a lot of guys, they said wingnut sales really went up when they passed that law.
Yeah.
So you just take your trailer to the job site, park it, take the license plates off and take it, put on your next trailer. So they weren't getting, they, everybody was getting around that law anyway, so.
Is that right?
But anyway, yeah, there's.
You didn't know that, Mike?
Anyway.
Anyway. I do not do that. I paid my hundred and thirty-six dollars for my tag. Uh, my two trailers, so. Anyway, um, a lot of new laws affecting a lot of different things, so, uh, please be aware of them. Visit the state of Illinois website for all the new laws that, uh, Chief McWilliams and the police officers will be enforcing in the near future. And also, make sure before you have your UTV or your golf cart out on the streets, that you have a new twenty twenty-two sticker. It's nice and, what is it called? Auburn orange? Or huger orange, I don't know which. But anyway, um, make sure that you do get your sticker renewed and updated. There again, we don't wanna write tickets or anything else. They'll give you a friendly reminder once that, you know, you don't have it if you get caught out there, but please go ahead and, um, you know, get that updated. Also, over the last two weeks, I've completed open meetings training, um, and then FOIA officer training. So now, Mr. Turner and myself both, um, are FOIA officers for the city of Mount Carmel. And the last thing I've got is, um, seeking approval. We are in the need of another vehicle. Currently, um, one of the, well, the Jeep that Mr. Meeks flew back in on from Wisconsin has racked up the miles. It's actually right at two years old since we've had it. Uh, I think the vehicle is eleven years old in car years. And, um, is in the need of replacement. I think so. Well, when Heath drives the car, you know.
Only reason I flew back because I was riding his tailwind. Yeah, listen, um, you did a motion for that.
Well, hold on, I wanna describe the car. So, um, we have a twenty fifteen Chevy Equinox that we are going to, uh, move over for the water reading, Heath Reed to drive, and we will phase out his twenty-ten Jeep Liberty. And then, um, add it to the list of items that we will put up for auction in the near future. But tonight I'm seeking approval. Uh, Jeff Lenson's got a twenty nineteen GMC Sierra, uh, that has actually very low miles, under forty thousand miles. And it is white, it is four-wheel drive, and it's got a long bed. And it's in excellent condition. Me and Mr. Gitcom drove it, and then me and Mr. Turner went out and looked at it today also. He is seeking thirty thousand dollars for the vehicle, which is actually under book value. So, uh, he has actually given us the discount off of what he was asking for the vehicle. So, uh, I'd like a motion to approve, and this, these funds will come out of the capital improvements, um, account, which we have money in there to pay for it.
Yep. Hundred and twenty-one thousand, six, four sixty-one as of today.
And so, and that's what the capital improvements, um, account is all about, is, you know, purchasing smaller things like that, uh, for the non-enterprise departments, so. This will be a vehicle that, uh, Mr. Gitcom and Mr. Easter both will use out of public works, and so, um, I think it's a good investment. It'd be nice, nice vehicle to add, so. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those, I guess roll call, Mr. Turner. Did it again?
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Eichmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger's absent.
All right, so move. Thank you, guys, very much. Commissioner Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me sign this so I don't lose track of where I'm at. You know how it is when you get old. I was helping Jake put up golf carts the other day, riding on the back of the golf cart, and Dogger goes by and he goes, hey, old man, you know you're gonna break your hip doing that. Since we're into spending some money here, we, our street, our, our street sweeper is how old, Mayor?
Thirty-two, thirty-three years old.
Uh, we were offered three thousand dollars trade-in. It's worth more than that in scrap. Uh, city's found a two thousand and fourteen Elgin Eagle street sweeper. Uh, it's very clean, works really, it, it's low mileage, runs good. Usually a new one's around three hundred thousand dollars, which I almost swallowed my tongue when I saw that, but we can get this one for a hundred and sixty-nine five. We keep putting money into that old junk street sweeper and it takes two men to operate. This is a one-man operation and, uh, I recommend to the council that we purchase this street sweeper.
How about we ask the council for approval of authorization to purchase upon inspection? Does that work?
Well, I thought you inspected it, Mike inspected it, and Ryan inspected it. Is that not the case?
No, we've not went and inspected it yet. Yeah, we need to.
What are you guys waiting on?
Approval from the council.
Okay, I say we need approval from the council to go inspect the street sweeper and see if it's worth our money to invest in.
The, uh, and as we discussed at the last meeting or the meeting before, I won't remember. We'd use the twenty-five thousand equipment month, a year out of MFT to pay towards that, correct?
I get ready to bring that up, but you're, yeah, go ahead.
So we, um, need to work with Mick on getting a, um, a loan agreement with a local bank, so we do not hit the, any of the general fund or anything for that, and then just reimburse, um, on a yearly payment or something.
So we'd be looking at needing to get about seven-year to eight-year note. Does anyone have interest rate?
Yep.
How long was the other one in service?
Thirty-three years. Now, this is a different type of street sweeper. The one that we currently have is a three-wheeled, uh, Elgin, I can't think, remember what its name is, but. Pelican, yes. And we are going to a truck-mounted style. And this is a mechanical broom brush versus a positive air. And basically, the reason we have to go to a mechanical broom brush is because of the, uh, the streets that we have are crowned. A positive air one, uh, that you might like see at Eastland Mall or something. It's all, the, the parking lots are flat. And they can bounce air back and the dust come up, but with our roads being crowned, um, for water drainage, they, uh, the positive air ones don't work as well. And we also use, uh, the current one to suck leaves up and other debris and stuff. And the positive air ones will not do that. So that's why we're going with this, but the big thing is, is that it is, uh, basically, it's on a little semi, little truck. And it can be drove. Right now, when they go out to street, uh, sweep the streets, you've got the street sweeper and then you've got a truck following it because it's got a smaller capacity, I think a three cubic yard dumpster inside of it. This one will have a larger capacity, but you don't have to have that second piece of equipment and that second man following the street sweeper. They can go and dump and then come back to where they stopped at. So it'll be an efficiency, um, situation, too.
The trucks included in the?
Yes. It is all mounted, all one unit.
Where's it at?
Elgin, Illinois.
Elmhurst, I'm sorry.
Or Elmhurst. Four and a half hour drive.
I mean, from what you guys have said, we don't really have much choice, or we're not gonna have a street sweeper at all, it sounds like.
Well, currently, we're not street, sweeping streets.
Street sweeper's down now. It's got another hydraulic leak that we can't even get to and we'll be spending money, just throwing good money, bad.
And that's been an ongoing situation. I mean, we fix one thing and something else breaks and it just, it's a continuous
I know.
black hole for cash.
I think if I remember right, we had issues when I was
Yeah.
street commissioner, maybe when you were street commissioner.
Oh, yes.
What exactly is the purpose of, and besides saying sweep the streets, is it necessary? I mean, is that something that is an equipment that actually we need to have?
I would recommend it because if not, um, like after Ag Days or any festival uptown, we put the street sweeper out there to collect all the litter. Uh, the smaller stuff, we do it after parades. And it is, uh, you know, like they said, we can purchase it through motor fuel tax, so we're not out anything on the general fund. It's a billable item to the state.
And we also, when we, we've had issues where we've had large rains and get like mud and stuff that's come off of different areas into the street, and there's not a real good way of cleaning it up without it. I mean, you could use a backhoe, but.
Chip and seal, too.
Oh, yeah.
We usually have general trash, you know, not, doesn't have to be a special event. If you drive it down some of the streets, if people don't pick up their trash and it, it's gonna accumulate and it's gonna look really bad in town.
When grass and things like that get out in the road. I mean, if you go down Oak Street right now, we've got, uh, an area that we, uh, need to pull back after construction, um, and we've put, uh, cold patch in it. Well, right now, with this rainy weather, the cold patch is popping out and it's going everywhere. And, um, you know, there again, if we had a street sweeper, they would've been out there today to sweep off the remnants. And, um, you know, like Commissioner Eichmeyer said, when we have a heavy rain, if we, if the street sweeper's not working, then the fire department has to go out and wash off the streets where the street sweeper can do it and not tie up the fire department. So.
Thank you.
They had no problem. Anyway.
Shall I continue?
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion? Or you wanna wait?
Uh, we need a new motion.
I just recommend they go look at it, I guess. I don't.
Well, we, uh, we can go ahead and make the motion for acceptance of, or approval of the acceptance of the machine upon inspection. Because I'll be honest with you. Nobody wants to drive nine hours to say, yep, and they're not gonna hold it. They're gonna hold it for our, us to call them tomorrow to say, we're coming to inspect it on this date. And, I mean, they've got a lot of people waiting.
I just wanna know who's gonna drive it home. I mean, does this thing, what's top end on it? Or do we? Do we tow it? I mean, do we haul it home or do we drive it home?
We'll find out how fast it'll go when Mayor Judge drives that back. We'll follow him and see how fast.
I will make the motion to do so. And also ask Mr. Mullenhour to look into financing options for it.
Sounds great. Do I have a second?
Do you want a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Eichmeyer.
Yes.
I used to have a dog, and he does it all the time.
Commissioner Dogger.
All right, you can continue.
Okay. Uh, we took the bucket truck for inspection. It's OSHA regulations that we do that. Everything worked out okay. I talked to Mr. Gitcom earlier, whether OSHA, uh, it's a requirement or not, we don't wanna get somebody hurt out there, so. We gotta make sure that bucket truck is top shape as much as we can possibly make sure that it is. Uh, street department, poured concrete, sidewalk, four hundred block and third street. Assisted in a water main break at the same location. They also had one on Ladue Drive. That, uh, they got that taken care of. I think everybody in, uh, North Drive, South Drive, my street, we were all out of water for a couple hours, but, uh, I was there for a little bit and those guys did an excellent job getting the problem solved. Did routine oil change on some of our equipment, passed an area on Oak Street, that's the one the mayor was referring to right there at the south end of, well, not the south end, but where they had cut it out to replace the concrete, didn't get a chance to do it, and there was a huge pothole there. That cold patch has helped. And I haven't been down there lately, so I didn't see that it was popping out, but.
There today.
Okay, they installed some, uh, Crime Stopper signs around town and that big warehouse we have down on Fifth Street, the street department. We're gonna try to keep all our, as much as our equipment in there as we can for the winter time, keep the frost and the snow off, and we're down there trying to rearrange that. Getting it organized to give us more room to park our vehicles in. End of my report, Mayor.
And to add to the Oak Street, uh, cold patch, uh, Mr. Gitcom has it scheduled every Friday for them to look at it to ensure that, um, it is
There you go.
filled in. Uh, we did have a resident lose a tire in it, unfortunately.
I can see why, 'cause it got pretty deep there for a couple of days until they put the cold patch.
His mother was not very nice on the phone, so. But, anyway. All right, that's your report?
That's made in my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Meeks. Commissioner Eichmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna focus more on revenue than spending at this point.
Awesome.
Receipts for the past two weeks in the general fund, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five twenty-two expenditures, one thirty-nine, nine thirty-nine. The, uh, majority of the money was property taxes, a hundred and forty-seven, eight of that, and then we had our state income tax, utility tax, state use tax. Taking us to just under two point three million in revenue year-to-date. On the general fund, we also received the real estate tax money in various other funds. I won't touch on every one of those today. I thought, I did mention earlier, we had a hundred and twenty-one thousand in the capital improvement fund. And, um, since, uh, Mr. Dallas discussed motor fuel tax, I'd note we have, uh, just over one million dollars in the motor fuel tax at this point. So I know there's several projects still ongoing, but, uh, and I believe that is the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Eichmeyer. Commissioner Dogger, absent. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the fire department had several runs, uh, seven of them in the last couple of weeks. They also, um, were the main drop-off for collections for Dawson Springs that, the firefighters that work that, they, they spent over a hundred and fifty hours in collecting, sorting, loading, packing, and getting every, all of the supplies ready to send down. So a big thank you to all of those firefighters and, and others that helped. Thank you to the community for their donations. We did turn several people away because we're like, we're done, we can't take anything else. But we did, um, some of the ingenuity that the guys had is that they, you know, put all of the baby supplies all together. All of the canned goods were together and they sorted it, put it on pallets, loaded the truck, so that it made it very simple for, um, the, once they got down to the distribution center, that it was easy for them to know what went where. So hats off to the, the fire department for doing that. In addition, um, they just, you know, Merry Christmas, watch your trees. Uh, if you still have a live tree, make sure that it's still being watered if you have not taken it out yet. The leaf back, I know some people were asking if the leaf back was still running. It was until today, when it went down again, and typically the leaf back does run until the first snowfall. So if we can get that back up and running, um, it will continue, however, you know, there is talk. um, it will continue. However, you know, there is talks of snow, so, um, if you have any questions, just let us know. But the leaf back should be hopefully back in service, but at this point in time, probably not. Um, but, you know, we're trying our best with that. Um, the recycling center and brush area, again, the special reminder that those are open on Wednesday and Thursday this week from seven-thirty to three-thirty. It will be closed on Friday and Saturday, but it will resume normal hours next Monday. So it will be closed Friday, Saturday, open back, open this week on Wednesday and Thursday, so that you can still take your recyclables there. And then there were a couple of questions in regards to the garbage totes. Um, my understanding is that they're changing some of those out.
Yep.
There is no additional charge if you need an additional tote. If you have any questions, there was some, some confusion. Don't call the eight-hundred number, just call City Hall and we can get that taken care of for you. Um, end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. Yeah, when I was down in Mayfield, um, they, um, said that Saturday when they, uh, Iver's Farms bought, brought in that semi-load, they had already, they had trucks waiting on it and they offloaded. And by three o'clock that day, they already had trucks going to Dawson and other towns. Um, so great gratitude for the firefighters and all the hours they spent. Iver's Farms for, um, taking it down and coming back. And then also Bob Johnson Farms out of St. F, they supplied the, uh, truck, or the trailer, I'm sorry, and, uh, the use of that. So, uh, very grateful. They, um, and the people of Mayfield and Dawson Springs, um, I've visited both locations now. And they were very thankful and, um, you know, just tragedy what happened, but I'm glad, um, we were able to help. And then also the monies that was collected up here at City Hall, I took down there, um, back on December twentieth to, um, purchase Ford and the American Red Cross. Uh, took that to distribute to people also in Western Kentucky, so, thank you. All right, Mr. Turner?
All right, Mayor, we have, uh, as you know, we took a house down at, what's the address on Cherry Street, the
Six fifteen?
Six fifteen Cherry Street. Um, we worked with Mr. Brady on this. We were, we need to pay the taxes on that because they were gonna sell that a tax, uh, sale, however, we have interest in that property. Along with a home that burned across from the Ball Diamond on Mulberry Street. Um, we'll need to get approval from the board to pay those taxes at eight hundred and twenty-three dollars per property. Once we get done with that, we'll send this to the county board chairman and hopefully they'll vote on us being able to, uh, own the property. Is that correct, Brady?
Yes, that's correct. So the city had a demolition lien on these, so if we can pay these taxes, the city will get the property.
Is that the three years taxes on all of them?
Yep. Yeah. So I, I assume that's what they've settled at that price, so. If we do this, we can get this signed and a check to them this week. So we can get the property awarded to us since we've spent the money to clean it up.
Okay, that's not in consent, so do we roll call vote on that? So?
Actually, that, that is not in.
Right, so I need to?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Motion for approval.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Ike Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger is absent. Um, also moving on, we have, we talked about vacating ordinance five-five-three last meeting. We actually need an ordinance on that. So under the consent agenda, we have, um, ordinance twenty-sixty-two, and that basically that validates what we talked about the last meeting, um, getting rid of where we can sell alcohol at City Hall, or, I'm sorry, the old City Hall.
We need an ear.
So we, that's just on there, just if you have questions, or else you guys have already voted on it. So I'll move on to ordinance twenty-sixty-three. The mayor's touched on that. Um, our ordinance was designed with a twenty-five dollar fee built in, therefore we have to change the ordinance to show that it's two hundred and fifty dollars to comply with the state. So that's also under consent agenda. And
We just will need to wa, waive second reading to get it done by end of year?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna have to waive the second reading 'cause it goes into effect this week. Um, or actually, I believe it went into effect
Immediately. They said immediately.
Immediately.
Which they gave the city or all municipalities no time to change it.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's a mount, we were already there. Um, give you some update on the airport. I know there for a while, we were talking hot and heavily about the airport. Well, it looks like record, we're having record sales up there. Um, we're getting some aviation fuel tax back from the, the state. The paperwork's been submitted, we just waited. Waiting for the funding. Uh, they're backed up. Um, but that should be at least around fourteen thousand dollars. Also, we've, they've updated the hangars. Um, they've, they've put new seals on the doors to prevent water from coming underneath. And then also the T-hangers have brushes that have been put on. That's to prevent birds from entering. That was one of the complaints of our customers. And so we're on top of that, trying to get those fixed. And let's see, Thirteenth and Chestnut, I'm gonna ask the chief, uh, his thoughts and you don't have to give them to me today, but you need to look at Thirteenth and Chestnut where the hospital has extended their, or where we widened the roadway. Um, looking at it, I don't think we can lawfully enforce the stop sign traveling, um,
Westbound.
westbound due to the fact that you can't see the stop sign until you're almost up on it. We only have a few options. One, to vacate the east and westbound lane and only leave a, um, the stop sign at North Chestnut. Or we have to figure out, configure a way to get a flashing red light in that area. Now, with that said, we do not own the property on the hospital. We, we have no right of way on that. So we would have to get special permission also from the hospital, and that would also require us paying a monthly fee. So I don't think we can make a motion tonight, but if you can look at that, review it, um, the only concern would be the speed also in that due to the school. So we're gonna talk to H O R tomorrow and have them look at that. Also, I just, I don't know what we can do unless Dave, do you have a suggestion at all?
Multiple people.
Mr. Yeah. Now, have you been up that way to?
Yes, the stop sign, the stop, you can't, unless you're looking for it, you do not see the stop sign.
No, and I don't think
One consideration, I really haven't looked at it except I just saw it a couple days ago. One consideration would be to remove that stop sign altogether and just have your stop at Chestnut Street.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And looking at that and speaking with Dave Easter also, that may, I just wanted the chief to look at it too because it's gonna be, required his officers um, to maybe patrol for a little while, just to keep the speed down. Um, but I really don't see that, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, that we can enforce that stop sign the way it's set. I think it'd be a violation if we tried to do something like that. So if you don't care tomorrow, go look at that, let me know. And
It was your turn?
Yes.
I had, uh, also been, had a couple people mention to me that it is hard to see where the stop sign is going south on College Drive, where they expanded the road 'cause the stop sign's over there too far and they've seen people blow through that now. Maybe not local people, they're used to it.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to probably look into that also.
Okay.
Not sure. I know there's a, there's a flashing red light there, but I think
Yeah, there is. There is a flashing and it, and that, we may have to
Wasn't a problem there, too.
Stop signs like we have at Park Road are at least flashing, those are, I think, eighteen hundred dollars roughly
Yep.
each, but, no, I
It was mentioned to me last week and I kinda slipped my mind, but this brought, brought it back up.
I've got the same, same brought up. We'll look into that and report back on the next meeting. And lastly, uh, I received a email from Heather Newman. She's with the Greater Wabash Regional Planning Commission. They do all of our grants. And anyhow, the city, uh, we've already talked about this and approved it, but evidently for the, the way they want this done, we had a applicant, or the city has already set up a don, interest bearing checking account. And it's for the payment to Kiefer Brothers for the property or the the improvements on Mount Carmel Oak and Fifth Street. The first payout is a hundred and thirty-three thousand eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Need a board approval to pay that. And the funds will be coming from the state. There's about two, two week turnaround. So I need a motion to pay that so we can get that sent into the state and receive our funds.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Ike Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dogger is absent. That is all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Alder? Chief McWilliams?
Uh, two things. Obviously, uh, this last week, we had a, uh, a search warrant we conducted at a home that was selling, uh, methamphetamine, and that resulted in approximately thirty-two thousand dollars being recovered. Um, along with, uh, methamphetamine and surveillance cameras. Um, so that was, um, in recent memory, I really can't think of a time where we've run into that, um, that amount of money and taking that kind of a hit on a local person. So I was, uh, very happy with how that played out. It was very successful, no one was injured. Um, so it went off with a relative ease. Um, and then the only other thing, um, the fire department, Wabash General Ambulance and, and, um, Wabash County Sheriff's Office and MCPD, uh, went to shop with a cop, actually, uh, Commissioner Zimmerman and Mayor Judge was there also. Uh, had a very successful, uh, shopping event, I think. And my understanding was about sixty children, thereabouts, uh, were provided with, um, an excellent Christmas. Uh, and I think it went off without a hitch and, uh, Princeton Walmart was very accommodating to us. Um, so that's, uh, a lot of people put a lot of funds into that. I just kinda wanted to make sure everyone was aware of how successful it was and um, probably one of the more, I think we probably helped as many or more kids as I can think of, um, on an equal playing field. So it was a, it was a very enjoyable night. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Um, wanna commend, uh, Chief McWilliams and the Mount Carmel Police Department for their hard work on these recent busts. Um, they have worked diligently to research and to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed before acting. And, um, like Chief said, anytime that, you know, you get meth and that amount of money, you know, Evansville's taking notice, um, you know, of what's going on in the bust and everything else. For a small community as Mount Carmel is, we, uh, that's, that's huge. So thank you very much. And also, um, the shop with a cop, uh, slash firefighter, it was great. Um, you know, Mark Seaton again did a wonderful job. And, um, you know, it was fun. You know, going and shopping and, you know, seeing the kids smile and everything else and, you know, seeing the firefighters and the police officers. And, you know, one of the officers was shopping, um, with, uh, their child that they were working with. And they, people noticed that, you know, that we were there doing it and we were getting donations from people that we didn't even know who they were. They were just like, this is wonderful. And, um,
Yeah, Sergeant, uh, Price actually had an individual give him, um, some cash just to donate randomly. Um, and just today, I was actually out and, um, one of, the, uh, the child that my wife and I helped with actually came up and shook my hand. He said, I just really wanna thank you. That was awesome. Um, what you guys did. And, uh, I tell the, uh, officers every year that this is, um, one of the best nights of the year. Uh, you truly give, um, you are truly giving someone something that they may not be able to receive full benefit that we often take for granted. And every time, without fail, they come back and they're like, man, that was, that was great. I really enjoyed that. Because sometimes the, uh, the officers are kinda reluctant to take on children, family, and try to coordinate a shopping. And it's very much a family event now. I, I think most officers and firemen had their, uh, family there, and they usually do. And, um, everyone kinda pitches in and, uh, makes it work. Uh, 'cause there's a lot of moving parts to this and, and, uh, Mark Seaton did an excellent job. And, um, it's a quite the ordeal that, uh, we pulled it off without, without fail.
And whomever donated the power wheels to raise the additional funds this year, that was very successful. So wanna thank whomever did that. And, you know, the little boy that I shopped with, you know, he had a message to everybody who donated and, you know, helped. And that was, thank you. It made his Christmas. And, uh, he was very appreciative, so. Thank you to everybody involved in that. I saw Commissioner Zimmerman and her husband, you know, they were having fun, smiling and helping out.
It was a blast. Our, our little girl, she, she was shopping for her siblings also.
Yes.
And that's what, you know, that's what she enjoyed the most, is picking out things that she was able to get for her siblings. And that's, you know, something that they wouldn't have had that opportunity to do if we weren't there to do that and help them out.
Yeah, and actually, uh, even, uh, her husband, uh, Trooper Zimmerman was present. Uh, he, uh, actually participated. So even the state police were involved. And they have been involved in the past, not to leave it out, but, um, so definitely a great evening, so.
All right, thank you, Chief. Chief Speth?
Yeah, I just wanna inter, one thing to say, you know, you know, everybody's, it's a busy time for everybody and they take the time to go out and help these young kids out in need and just makes your heart feel good. Just to see that big smile on their face and stuff. And imagine, you take them shopping and the first thing they think about is their siblings. They don't think about themselves. They're thinking about their siblings and stuff, how they can help them out and stuff. This really gets to you and stuff. So. And at that point, I'd like to thank everybody. Like Commissioner Zimmerman said, down in Kentucky with the trailer for food and hygiene, stuff like that, they did an excellent job. For the ones that donated toys, I ended up down in Mayfield too for the kids for Christmas. Uh, today, along with the city street department, fire department had their ladder truck tested and all their ground ladders. So, uh, on the ladder truck, we didn't have no issues. We had like two or three small things that we got hit with, which was able to tighten up and pass, so. We did have a ground ladder fail, but we're gonna get it replaced 'cause there's no getting out of service, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
It's kinda exciting to watch them put a hundred thousand volts through a piece of equipment. Uh, I get a little anxious when I see that getting done and it's raining outside. Uh, so, anyway.
You weren't on it.
Yeah. We were close.
Did you get the grounder on?
Yeah. I had a hold of Mr. Gidcombe, you know, on his shoulder all the entire time if I felt something was gonna jump. Uh, but anyways. Thank you, Chief Speth. Mr. Gidcombe?
All right, uh, another spending money point.
Uh.
Mount Carmel Public Utility has graciously offered to sell us their two thousand and fifteen Vectron. What this does is this will help when we have water main breaks, sewer, sewer issues, uh, cleaning out storm sewers. Uh, it's a powerful jet of water that goes down and creates the hole that is sucked up by this big vacuum to get to those leaks without tearing up fiber optics, gas lines, other water lines. Uh, they originally started out wanting thirty-five thousand for this. Uh, they offered it to the city for thirty. I asked and they came down to twenty-seven, five hundred. And this is a very important piece of equipment.
It'll be utilized. Well, another utilization of it also is, is that when we have sewer mains clogged up, Well, another utilization of it also is, is that when we have sewer mains clogged up, or lift stations clogged up, we can lower that hose down in there, and instead of taking hours to suck the water out, to clean out the, the trays and everything else, we can literally just drop this down in a matter of minutes, be back up and running, so it, um, it will be a labor saver. And, uh, also, it would probably reduce our workman's comp liability, because currently, when we have a, um, lift station, we manually have to suck it and then get down and dig it out. Um, and, you know, anytime you're putting people in encap, in, in encapsulation areas, it's a huge liability, um, and you don't want anybody to get hurt, so. Do I have a motion for this piece of equipment?
Is this split, split between water and sewer?
Yes.
Funds?
And Commissioner, Commissioner Dogger not being here, he is a hundred percent on board with this piece of equipment for water sewer maintenance.
I know it would've been perfect for that situation on the D drive the other day.
Yes.
I mean, it was, it took those guys probably an hour longer than it should have, just because there was so much stuff, piping, valves, and everything else in that one hole that, uh, and then they had to cut more of the street out over here and dig the hole deeper, so that water would run over to this, and with that unit we're talking about, that would all been eliminated, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to buy the thing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ickmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger absent.
All right. Consent agenda, does anybody have any questions on what Mr. Turner discussed earlier on consent?
We need to pull out the one to do a second, waive the second reading?
Yes, on, uh, ordinance, uh, two sixty-three.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixty-three. Um, we'll waive, uh, second reading on that.
Do we have to make a motion to do that?
I don't.
Eric, yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Wait the second?
I thought you were making a motion, sorry.
No, I was just making sure that that's what we have to do.
We don't have a choice, it takes Megan to do it anyway, so.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Immediately.
So, I'll make the motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks.
Yes.
Commissioner Alder.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger is absent.
All right, so on the rest of consent agenda, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make it, I'm just running through them tonight, I gotta.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call, Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Ickmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
All right.
Dogger is absent.
All right, do we have anything else to discuss this evening? This is the longest meeting we've had without Commissioner Dogger, um.
It'll be short next time, though.
Yes. Nothing else, um, have a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will adjourn and come back into liquor control. When Mr. Turner's ready.
We don't reckon.
All right. Bring to order the liquor control meeting.
Oh, okay, I'm one behind.
All right.
That is a nice one there.
We have a nice stack of, um, liquor licenses this year, we do actually have, um, a few new ones. Uh, one new one for now, um, and that is Liquor Lake LLC. They will be operating at five oh four North Walnut Street. Um, from my understanding, it will be a liquor store, correct?
Where is that?
Family video. Yeah. Is that correct? All right.
Address, is it correct? Let me go.
Okay, didn't seem right, but.
Family video building?
Yes, it'll be located in the Family Video Building. It is the last liquor license for packaged liquor that we do have. We only have four of them, and that is all we will be doing, we will not be expanding. In fact, um, in the near future, I'll be reducing our liquor licenses, just because there's no need. Waiting on Mr. Getcom to come back, so I can approve these. I guess I can go ahead and approve, 'cause the only thing I have to do, um, I'll, the address is wrong, but I can go ahead and, uh, grant Liquor Lake LLC their license.
Five twenty.
Five twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll scrub that in there, and then we will, um. Correct it. All right, I approve all liquor licenses for twenty-twenty-two, uh, we'll actually see an increase in our licensing fee this year. Since last year, due to COVID, we only, we waived the fee for the first six months, we will not be doing that this year. We'll be charging full, um, fee.
And we have received every one of them.
And we've received fees for every one of them, so, all right. All right.
So I do have a question.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, so the one that was supposed to be out, that the.